Thank you, I'm Paul for order. Highland Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting today, Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. In New Jersey, the meeting act was in that constitution for the right of not letting to have advanced votes up. That's what ten meetings of public bodies in which any justice acting interest is discussed or written upon. And by some people, what is meeting open public meetings act. Behind the Harvard Education has caused notice of this meeting set for the time, date and location to be submitted to publication to the foundation of theory and courage. And posted on the board's website at least forty eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board have been given the opportunity to so we can what we are your trans. Hi, I'm Paul. Dr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Salvand.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Bruce. Here. Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Garman.
Here.
Ms. Borg.
Here.
We will now accept to exact the reset. We have resolved submit to the sunshine at and get essay. We're looking for national routine. The Highland Board of Education now being posed session to discuss personnel people were self evaluation. These assumptions are permitted to be discussed. You need to exactly, um, you need to write your assumptions. So I think it's like, uh, may I, may I come and follow both? Dr. Brady.
Here.
Ms. Salvand. Here. Dr. Call, right?
Here.
Dr. Pinkage. Here. Ms. Bruce. Here. Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Garman.
Here.
Here.
Okay. We'll keep a quiet patience.
I think this is to the lives of the United States of America and to the republic for Richard Sands. One nation under God and invisible for literally even just a star.
Our communication from the last month, including, um,
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry, you said something. Um, very, if our new student representative is Lord of Education, Bobby Lee and Teresa Ball.
Thank you both with Sam. And maybe you may. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear truth, faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under authority of the people.
I will bear truth and faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under authority of the people.
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by board policy for the office of a member of a board of education. And I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
I do affirm that I possess all the patients. The staff is required by the board policy for the office of member of a board of education. And I am faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Graduation, feel welcome to the building.
Okay, now on to communications. Um, one communication. I submit to solve that letter. Uh, I wasn't doing you then regarding to the first step of the policy. Uh, the communication to the CPAC, very good times about the three to one model. And the letter relied to the world back there. Um, we'll now move on to the four minutes. I moved to remove the minutes from the hybrid workshop voting meeting and exacting session from August twenty fifth. So I guess. Dr. Brady.
Yes.
Salva. Yes. Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Dr. Pixley. Yes. Ms. Bruce. Uh, Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Garman.
Yes.
Ms. Borg.
Yes.
And we'll now have our first student representative reports for this whole year.
So we gathered, um, we can be back from the Irving or the.
They proposed your method.
So that would be back from all the representatives from the six schools. And they also reported that for subway to the university here. And they're helping their doctor so many and they're plenty of shirts.
Yeah, um, with Irving, I mean, I've been entirely say a lot about how they could spend so the family of the teachers. I also know they influenced different policies to keep the students safe. And the highest was maybe that all students about fish to the.
Okay. Awesome, thank you so much. Any questions for our student facts?
Oh, someone, I think you want to share a little bit about the topic of your goals is how some information about scheduling. I don't know if you wanted to share some of that. And if you know, it was okay, so you're gonna be that's.
Underwood. That can support the remote, so. A lot of especially this year, many of schools have reported a lot of issues with their schedule. We saw the pathways and these students aren't taking the positive mission to take into their home. Just limited class size, I don't know, I mean, what's up, students, and it's really affecting that. Yeah, and, um, it mostly is because like, yeah. Classes that used to be there, they're going to pass. Uh, I should know, I know, like, they've been moved to the experience as that, so I'm very pleased. And you must therefore. So that's nice, so we can go here and place to.
Any questions?
I just want. I'm ready to run links down somewhere.
Most of it actually.
By yourself.
It's very special. And so for you to release in the.
And Dr. Suso will provide a update as well. Sure, first from tense report. Any other questions for us, you press? Because I will be very first, uh, in question, I have the questions. Joe, right, all right. Thank you so much. Um, all right, so. So.
Thank you, and well, they were so excited to have you here. And for those who still know, we did in our education, where I shared information on how they could, you know, build reports, make their own, but also make the good visits or anything. Um, and so I appreciate the extra information that you brought regarding some concerns we had, that's really worth us. It was something that Dr. Gatlin and I will be very close to on. So a couple of updates for the start of the school year, we are watching and rolling. So first and foremost, I want to big, do a big shout out to Jahan Aladet. Who sent the Highland Park Roll Soccer all time scoring record, so we're going to celebrate Jahan at that some sport meeting, but it's such a really big accomplishment. Um, so, um, she is a senior and now the all time meaningful scorer with the, um, Highland Park Roll Soccer history. This past Friday night, uh, she headed three goals in the match against Wardlaw, Perbridge. So passing the previous career record of sixty one goals held by Lani Katie Walbert. So Jahan now stands at sixty three career goals and continues to add her total with seven days left in the season. So fantastic milestone for Jahan. And if you follow, I think the stalking media, the Instagram accounts are really great. And, uh, so I'm sure you also follow, um, the, the one of the work we have at the high school and athletics and barbell with the, uh, social media, so fantastic. For a cell phone update, I do have some of that, so everything's going really, really well. Uh, and barbell will start that principal now reported that everything's going smoothly at barbell. They had one incident with a student taking it out on the bus line, um, but that's it. But there's one incident of a student having what they weren't supposed to. At the middle school is ready, giving a little bit of a longer, uh, blurb, so I'll leave all these, that's really awesome. Um, so she said the cell phone has been transforming, transformative in the middle school. The students have been compliant and we had their little pushback from them. In the sun, she asked, um, she asked parents to notify the name office and students would not be bringing any personal electronics with them to school. This way, um, this was a way to create a no personal electronic list. So the teachers would not spend time asking students for the devices in the morning. So if they were on, then I'm not bringing it, they didn't have to be bothered with asking for it. That is taken, um, that is taken the most time as many students said they did not have any personal electronic devices, but they were not on the list. So for any student who says that they either had to get, um, had to get a phone call home to make sure they were on the list. Or had their backpacks, um, searched to make sure, um, and then they had, well, we had fifty in the first few days of. So students not wanting to go over their devices, uh, they're down to a couple, each three now. So with that, we hit the school, they were down, um, to only just a couple. And most of the students who said they did not have the device that we confirmed in our added list, they have about a hundred students not bringing devices at all. So three, the three more students. In addition, the middle school cafeteria, she would estimate that they only had about ten percent of the, in the past, student, in the past, during middle school, um, lunch. They only had about ten percent of the class going out for recess. This year they have about ninety percent. So that's fantastic. So if kids are not sitting indoors playing on their phone with their devices, then they're going out to view weather helps and, um, we have these things connected to these. That's been really awesome. In the first eight days from the twenty four, twenty five, twenty year, or this year, twenty five, twenty six, they see a significant drop in the use of smart passes. So that's the, what they do when they go on a phone book and they'll then sheet a pass, so they need to go to the bathroom, to the nurse, or the heat center. So they have the initiative to pass, and it is green, they can go. If it's red, they can't go. And part of it is, um, something that we can regulate on the back end, like if there's two seats that are conflict with each other, if one is out, they get like a red light and they can't leave. Just to try to mitigate that, um, some issues during a structured time. Um, but anyway, so that's how the passes works. Um, they compared the seventh and eighth graders, um, and there were eight hundred and twenty two less passes created this year compared to the first eight days of school last year. She believes that there's a direct correlation between the students who did less passes and the fact that they don't have personal device. A lot of times that was spent out of class in pursuit, so we go to the bathroom and use their phones. Um, so, so our big improvement, so now they don't need to leave, use their phone, they're not leaving at all. Students in class more needs more access to instructional time, which is always a, a good thing. So, um, yeah, she gave you the chart and the numbers are pretty solid shape for the first eight days last year, first eight days this year. So that's fantastic for the middle school. And at the high school, very positive remarks as well from Dr. Dodman. She said they went over the cell phone policy as a high school level of students during classes that way, as well as back to school night. Students are being respectful of the policy and understand that we trust them, we keep their phones away during disruption. So it's been fantastic. Um, you know, speaking of cell phones, in the past, we've had issues when cell phones have been out. When we, when there's been concerns about, um, breaches to our school's safety and security measures. And things like that, their Facebook or text messaging to parents and then, you know, they spiral out in the community faster than we can get a hold of them here in school. And, you know, I think not having the cell phone will really help us in that way to maintain, um, safety and security in all the past. Um, I said that, you know, if you post where your child is during your vacation, that's giving away our safe place. And if there's people out there that want to harm our children, giving up where they are in their safe place is not helping the situation and starting the situation. So I'm hoping with, um, you know, less use of the cell phones, that will also help maintain safety and security. Um, but, you know, the other day we had an incident, um, at the high school in which, um, there was some, a safety breach. Um, but I will say that, um, what happened was they sheltered face was called and the police were contacted. At no point was any student or staff in any kind of immediate threat, um, danger or harm. We followed all of our protocol, the staff did an amazing job, students were awesome, they sheltered in place. Um, the police were called to conduct the investigation. Some of the concerns I know that the community has when these type of situations occur is that, and it's only natural that we want detailed information. Everyone wants to know what happened, what happened? I mean, staff would say, what, who, what happened over there, right? That's, that's human nature, except the problem is that I can't give that information. And there probably are very other reasons, but, um, some of them, you know, is that we can't really divulge specific information on investigations. Especially when they're incomplete or ongoing. And those two cases in real time, even the incident that happened a couple of days ago, is still an active investigation. So there's not much that I can communicate at that point. Um, so, you know, whether it's incomplete or sometimes unverified, um, information could create unnecessary panic. Jeopardize the integrity of the investigation or even interview with law enforcement's ability to respond effectively. So that's why sometimes my communication is intentionally focused on what matters the most, which is what it should be, right? Is to make sure that everyone knows that everybody is safe and secure and there's no threat. Once I have that information, then we can act accordingly. So in this particular example, once I knew there was absolutely no threat to any student or, or, or staff, which was, by the way, the bridge to the whole thing. Um, decisions were made, we could really soon sometime for dismissal, we could have after school activities and things like, no. If I felt that there was any kind of immediate threat, a different course of action would have been taken and people would have been notified. Um, you know, so one of the things that, you know, is important to know is, is that the communication is put out for a reason. But first and foremost, I want everyone to make sure that we focus that things in these situations can go from, from good to bad, even bad to worse. Um, but the safety and security is always our number one priority and communicating that will always be my number one priority. And when I don't get detailed, when I don't get detailed information is for a reason. And I just want the community to be able to respect that, um, for what we have, have to, to, to deal with, um, and that we are, um, acting accordingly, we work very closely with law enforcement to make sure information is shared in the manner which is needed, um, decisions are made and things like that. Um, I also want to reiterate, so I think there was some concern about, um, that police work a lot in our schools. There is no ban on police in schools. Um, we do have, um, policies that, that regulate when we include them in things. And when it comes to a matter of school safety and security at that level, absolutely do, we do, we then can work with that. So they are allowed in their schools, uh, both to remind the community, both the middle and high school have U C P specialists. Uh, but their focus is about culture and climate, because that's what's really most important. Is making sure we're building a positive school culture and climate, where everyone feels safe. And that's what our U C P specialists do, uh, so they're about building relationships with students, they get, um, much training on sort of practices, ways to communicate. But mostly to be escalate situations, if students and, and people feel connected to the school community and something arises, they're able to be escalate that before it's going to get anywhere. So that is, that is the goal of the district, and we will continue that way. Um, and like I said, um, law enforcement is used very skated and authoritative, um, in terms of, of student safety and security, staff safety and security. So I want to reiterate that, you know, it's, um, upsetting that that happened with the personal days of school. Um, I understand that things in the news, things that are happening to the schools still continue to upset us and put us off in state, um, of anxiety. Um, but please know, and we put a ton of trust in myself and our administration here and the staff to maintain the safety of the people that mean the most to you, the school, and your children. And we, we take that very seriously and we, the, the, and the way we're committed to do that. Um, so I think that's really important, so I do want it to, um, that told us to look like that we're not off to a great start, because we certainly are. But I thought it was a bit piggybacked too, that we're on the cell phone, and that seems to be really positive. And that also helps with safety and security. So we're off to a really great start, um, and I look forward to providing updates, you know, as the year unfolds. Thank you. Oh, right, oh, thank you, thank you, and champions, and our physical program. So I don't have a, um, uh, takeaway from our own report, I think I do, I know that I can get a little update in our financial facilities report, but, um, I know that things have been, um, uh, you know, going relatively well in terms of, um, them acclimating, um, so this has only been a week and a half. So they are working to acclimate for our schools, I know they were, uh, working on this, I already had a little case. So we're trying to work closely with them on those things to make sure it's all there about smoothly. Um, in addition, I know there were some concerns about a waitlist. Um, the only thing I can recommend is if you know when, you know, before school starts that they're going to be aftercare, please enroll as soon as possible. What happens to the license, what happens to that? What program, whether it's in house or non-source program, is that the, the ratio has to be, be there. You can't exceed that ratio for your license or to your license in jeopardy. So if it's a ten to one and twelve to one ratio, and then you enroll another student and now you're thirteen to one. We can't, that can't be allowed. So that's why they, they did staff to make, have an increase in plus of, uh, a moment. However, I think it was bigger than they anticipated, um, so there was a little bit of a waitlist, which I know disappointed some people, but I know they were actively, um, working to, um, work some more staff and, and be able to, 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 uh, to import, um, more students on, um. So what I see, I know the students, I, my own perspective is that students play on playground outside barbell. But one of the things I appreciated was the champions, people wear their shirts. So I know, and, uh, as a champion staff versus not, which is great, especially on our playground when it's kind of open to the public too. And I can go out there and kind of look at who's, um, who's the program, who might not be, just for safety and security purposes and things like that. Um, and, uh, so they're meeting with me, uh, this week to go over a bit more updates. So, um, at next meeting, uh, or at least financial facilities, which have been the more wants, uh, to invite them in, they're open to begin to do some presentations and sharing updates and stuff.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Susa?
So I thought we were like, we were only champions, we went everywhere.
He's been saying he really loves.
I, I need to comment on, well, it's all great to see, you know, the cell phones. And it's, I think when there was being much different ones to that, something you, they're not, you know, we heard before, 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 right? In amount of fantastic, and probably will be reactive. And how we did it, when we do something like this, and you don't give you the presentation, they can, you can kill it before and then, and then, and then. So I mean, that, this is pretty great, how it's managed. How should we, yeah, so, thanks everybody.
All right, um, we're going to move on to our first public comments. The Highland Board of Education, well, the public participation and that will serve this time for your comments. Board of Education number zero one six seven establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Is there anybody in person for public comment? Okay, Angela, how many do we have on claim?
We have three.
Okay, anybody on Zoom for public comment?
No hands raised.
And with no hands raised, we are going to close public comments. We're moving on to our waiting for the recommendations, um, starting with the curriculum instruction.
All right, curriculum instruction met on August eighth. We talked about the mass curriculum adoption, they're not adopting curriculum this year, but in part, uh, to promote a unit later in the year. Uh, the plan is to have a direct amount and clear amount. Um, and so the teacher's topic of clear comparison, and so, uh, because we have some money, you know, budget, we're going to pay for curriculum adoption, we can pay for this. Um, and I think we'll do the clear type of comparison for the teachers, they will use these to, to, to really see how they're working, um, how students are responding. So I think that's a good possibility, so. Decision. Now, as we talked about those, uh, new, um, payback report cards. Uh, and, uh, so we saw the draft of, of, of the report cards, and they're much more focused on providing, um, feedback on key standards for, for students. Um, and, uh, and those standards are great for the New Jersey learning standards. That were recently, uh, revised, um, very similar that, um, adopted, really adopted. Um, and I think the, the goal is to actually provide more, you know, um, feedback for parents as well. Um, so that the parents can see where students are actually using strengths, where they still have areas to grow. And have, uh, you can also see a relationship to what first falls to learning that. Uh, for progress reports, we have the marble dance, um, these will be tied to the benchmark assessments. Um, last year was the first time the benchmark results were sent home for literacy, um, we're doing that math and wellness here. Uh, and so we also share, uh, information related to the, uh, standard sets during that order benchmark assessment. Um, we briefly talked, um, about district summary reports, um, and happy reward, they were great games, you know, especially in middle school. Uh, at least there were some students that have seen the expectations at each grade level. Um, we can, there are multiple reasons, um, that you need to have looking at the benchmark data, they start consumed. One factor from syllabus, get a lot of, of our B O A teachers, um, focus on specific grade level, um, uh, skills. Uh, maybe while it's all reconstruction to address additional needs, um, as well as any more opportunities for, uh, practice. But I see, um, with, uh, S L H, the state assessment. And also there is this relation between the culture and crime work being done in middle school, and you can, students are being more engaged and, yeah. Being within construction, I, um, corruption. Um, this was recently shared, so there was still a conversation with, uh, both the curriculum, uh, that decided the positive and the negative things. Uh, if this was going, uh, it's, it's. That was my rhetoric, so. And, uh, I have action items. Uh, we have field trips, um, one is field trip to seven six, another your math meets. Um, never approval of the district management plan. Who will do the professional others plan? Um, who will provide, uh, the part that I mentioned, approval of one student's own destruction. Um, and the annual agreement of a M O U with red, um, same.
Are you putting the next? Page, so next cultural needs, or I think that, because it will be good practice for the cell phone.
Yeah, so there's way to be found every October fourth, you know, October fourth or October sixth, through November fourth or November sixth. Uh, the beginning of October, and it'll be open through, um, the beginning of November, so it'll be on the low that information will be coming soon, um, not complete.
Any other questions for? I did not, I was a part of the. I'm just trying to shuffle, we have a long way in terms of what we want to talk about and getting the, to not just. He can do it really.
And just a little, it was a couple years of the main case, so it was something a little bit of a way. It took, yeah, it took a long time, it was a lot of involvement, it was a lot of conversations and really trying to figure out what, what would work. Because they could put everything on their current grade level, they couldn't be completely overwhelming. So if you notice, science, for example, this new science professor got a mind that they took the science and theory practice and wrote them up by grade level. Because if not, things would be so, I mean, you're looking at expensive report, and that would just be way too much overwhelming. So they were really thoughtful and just some of a couple of years they, they get it, where everyone would be really excited and confident about it. So I think, uh, just remembering that exactly, and, uh, can broker him there for all of our comments.
Yes, they've been team, so it's amazing. Yeah, I know, I understand, it's a lot to go through and just write it, not too much, or call it enough detail. That's my. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, very, very, I agree. Uh, they boil down, you know, it's just things, things to insert who actually achieving, other things just not working on, not too much, um, you know, boil down, it's just. Writing, uh, a parent, and then have to see where their actions and where they've achieved.
I'm very excited about the map, I have that as well. Um, I think it's a great idea to do that pilot, um, rather than selecting something based on, you know, a presentation. And just actually having teachers implement, I think, to see how it's working for them and how some students, um, is really going to be interesting. So curious to see what happens. Yeah, I'm excited also, I was a little nervous about the pilots in the sense of, you know, you're like, yeah, because, you know, it's math. And so if, when it doesn't work, you know, we're back to, it's sort of, or just have, just choose. So again, not to. You don't get down on this topic, but let's be, this is important, but just be mindful of. Just sort of the outcomes, it just made me really, so, yeah. Do you have, um, professional development learning sites according to pilots? It's, yeah, great.
Yeah, so we use some of mine, that was, as we, uh, become the fashion model, you know, we need to provide, you know, for them. The old gift. You used to get, you're probably, you may even try it out, uh, I give that essentially to sale the dish, and then the work can be more. Um, but, you know.
It's gonna pay now.
Pay for the large, for certain.
And then giving us lower districts.
Yeah.
I, I, it is your.
Well, maybe if you're LA, you'd like, you'd like. Other Ohio Park or, or some other districts that are larger than us locally, like overuse and stuff like that, I still struggle with the same issues.
Yeah, I really, I think that gives really positive sign, you know, teachers are going to use these to really compare and like track the. Are they working, who are they working for, who are they not working for? Our teachers have adjusted to this, putting the same terms in data like, you know, really. You know, critically, because I know some, some are good at, at the start. You can maybe roll turn off from, but if they're going to begin, sometimes they can achieve that more better than you. And they're coming, because sometimes both of those that you didn't.
Um, so I'm really excited to hear that there is continued progress, uh, improvements in the NJSLA data. I know it was just a preview, I'm just wondering when um the data is going to be available.
It'll be available by October four. Yeah, okay, thank you. So in, and in the, the way that we were saying, given maybe a few years. So it's like, so I'm going to say that this, so everything comes in buckets and that's like, I just want to be the last of the reports. But when I went in the other day and they were not there yet. So we're just waiting the last of the reports, uh, which is sub through data. Once that's done, release, um, then they give you everything for success to put it out to the community. So we're just waiting on the final batch of data.
Nice quick question. I'm running Saint Peters, um, I don't know, I'm understanding this, what's our question?
Oh, so that, that is a new one, so they reached out, um, so one of the things that we, one of the issues that we've been having is a need. Uh, to hire um specific staff, areas in need of support staff, that include special ed, ESL. Um, some of those like higher reading to fill positions, the staff, um, will, you know, get one applicant. A no applicant, so we've been really paying a lot. One of the um uh personalities that you're going to approve tonight is actually a teacher. Um, coming back into business who was a general educator, who's doing the emergency certification. To get special ed, to fill uh special ed goal for us, um, in terms of, of social studies and history. So it's really slipping, it's out there for some of these higher D certificates. Uh, so we're partnering on things that know the boss. To the district, uh, what Saint Peters does is they'll come and they onboard, um, the staff. They come to do, I think, some of the leading classes at Saint Peters, really certificate. They'll offer a really reduced tuition rate for our staff, for our staff. Um, they can do a cohort model, if they do a cohort model, they can even do it at a much cheaper, reduced rate. Um, because it's a larger group of our staff going, uh, it could be six and 10 teachers. They can even do it onsite here, virtually or at Saint Peters. So they can do it here, so their staff can come here and teach the, the classes that night or after school. So the staff don't have to leave, um, as a model as well. So they offer a tool that varieties, including coming here and sort of onboarding them through the addition process. They weigh the addition uh fees, so there's a bunch of um great benefits that our staff could have. So we're just trying to uh work, you know, just try to get, um, like any R fine stuff that maybe wants to go get ESL certificate. They want to get special ed certificate, something like that, because it gives us a little bit more flexibility. Um, offering like a, a discounted rate for tuition would be really helpful. Um, because there's only so much money in the communal pot for tuition reimbursement, according to the collective bargaining agreement. So I thought that would be helpful too. You know, as a way to, to get more of our teachers, um, maybe to maybe take advantage of some. The next over the opportunities and allow the district to hire needed to fill positions. This is teachers only, not students. Correct, this is teacher only, but as far as they do, they do, um, other things for students, they'll come to, uh, like. The college fairs and they can help, um, with the labor requirement and they have a whole list of other things that they could provide. Regardless of the agreement or not, that they can provide, they're like, oh, we don't come to Highland Park. Our demographics are very similar, they're a minority story institution. And they're like, oh, we'd love to come and, and work here. So it just sort of connects with the school counselors and all of that. So, um, just trying to get exposure for the students, obviously, but, um, we're sort of trying to get, um, you know, get some staff. Um, for that, in addition, not as part of the agreement, but on the side of this related to that, Alan, um. The E S K J, the Ed Services Commission of New Jersey set aside a big chunk of money from their budget to support Middlesex County teachers. Will get those higher D certificates. Uh, so if we have staff that are interested, um, I can fill out a form with the commission. And they can reimburse the district for our, like, the bargaining agreement, that money as well. So we have signed with the other pool then? Yeah, so that's, that's outside of the pool. So we think that whatever are the bargaining agreements says for the credits, I just fill out a form. And then once their grade is submitted, um, the services, Ed Services and Commission of New Jersey reverses us and then we reverse the staff member. So that is outside the pool of tuition reimbursement that we all, that we offer. So we're just trying to come up with more ways to, um, increase, uh, the Middlesex County's super into this being often. And that's one of the things that we're all finding is in need, so we're all trying to work collectively to figure out how we can, um, you know, get more, um. Getting more of these positions still by having to follow right people.
All right, we will move on to Anthony and next lessons for the board.
Anthony and next since we met on last September fourth, uh, this first week of school year, very late agenda. Um, actually just a policy agent, hopefully, uh, we discussed the, the order. Uh, we have the AI policy, number three, three, six, five. Uh, and this policy really just kind of lays out the district's acknowledgement of. Use of the AI and for the end of learning, um, and also provides value on the expectation to run on. Except for the use of AI by students. Um, Dr. Sessa shared, uh, as usual, her detailed and thorough research around what other districts are doing in this area. So for the districts also, we've already announced your policy statements. Um, so she viewed other districts' AI policies and got feedback from their administrators. Um, and to help inform the policy development as well as the district's draft of plan. Uh, for, um, kind of laying out provisions of the policy. Uh, so let's see, um, something we've added, uh, to flesh out policy, philosophy and overall approach to AI use. Uh, so for example, the overall policy, uh, philosophy, I should say, is all about focusing on preparing for students, teachers and professional staff. For the evolution of AI in fear and quickly, um, improving, improving student staff, professional staff, teachers. Knowledge and skills of using AI tools wisely, um, and also of course protecting, uh, essential student learning from challenges of a long ago AI. Um, so the district will engage support teachers in incorporating AI as well, since that was a good part of our session too, in terms of. How to form support, uh, in terms of incorporating AI practices, we just know, I mean. Um, the policy clearly the listed issues that should be, uh, addressed around AI use. And, uh, that can be adopted in the district's AI. So a lot of detail here, uh, just over some of the, uh, different issues that are. Uh, we need to. Not a lot to say, on. Issues around where a staff member is authorized to convince students to use some AI in science, uh. An explanation of when and how and what, to what extent a staff member may convince students to use AI in science. Um, it involves fleshing out the plan, uh, some sticker that requires a staff member authorized to distribute use. And AI science from the form of students at the time of the assignment, issues in which, I don't know, should be, like, yeah, being used. Um, this was a limited use of AI, the violating policy course, only just going to find out as well, so. At the free, uh, intrus on that there to comment and AI policy and problems. Um, always the possible, the student violation of the policy. Um, which may, we may be able to, the consequences of this, you know, uh, policy, which is one, which we already have in place. On the second, we can use a bigger, we use more collecting. Um, and again, also making sure that it's consistent with the street conduct. Let's see, uh, there's more, this approval, this approval to listen AI platform being used by students in science, which is something that I found, just so you could understand. Um, there is a, I think, still good work in most of the AI platform that's changing, uh, the other day. Um, and also to use by staff, virtue of trust, advantage, result, and that's the, um, and. Um. And, and, you know, again, just general good practice and, um, use around AI and also safeguard against equations. And how it's, it's also sort of helps you, so that's really kind of bottom that line. Uh, and then again, the, the history of AI plan, just some question that I've just detailed after that. From that, I mean, yes. Uh, then moving on, we talked about, uh, policy five seven zero one, after the term moving. Uh, and this is, uh, formerly all good use of policy, it's a duty to be made. So very positive, uh, post suggested app updates really is just about updating like, it should, um, that's a duty. We should, we've had our talks, um, and still be taking a deep look. Oh, yeah, you see, a long time, basically, yeah, the questions.
Anything, any questions for Dr. Coleman?
This is a question on the AI policy, that is the central leadership team, that they. And our self whole policy works so well because it went through the leadership team, and so the leadership team is out, what is it, from?
Yeah, so in the spring of last year, um, Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Lewis met with, um, the central leadership team to talk about the, um. The, uh, policy recommendations and the plan, um. We, the three of us worked on the draft of a plan, started from scratch. Probably would have been a lot, so we figured why we had the bill, went on the district's kind of task in my head, so we kind of check where you came from it. Um, so you will look at it as white guys, crap, for the, for the constant. Uh, so it went through central leadership team, um, in the spring, and it'll be a backup on the radar in the fall, Michelle. And Steve will be back to present some of the feedback that the, um, staff gave at their in-service. So we've, the staff reviewed it, so now we'll circle back and kind of give some updates and, and kind of check it, I think it's like that.
Any other questions? Okay, we will, my hands on the sound base.
I think facilities that I don't see kinds of second, um, and. Under our factory items that we talked about is what's on our agenda. Um, difference in now, because we're being earlier this month than usual, like the holidays. Um, there was something up, the typical findings reports that we see, there are going to be, uh, all business account reports will be on October agenda. Um, we will be providing bills, um, the reoccurring bills that you need to pay, so they can't wait until October twenty seventh. So you know, that's a little different, but, uh. Uh, the facilities on the agenda, we talked about, uh, there's some change orders for, um, law and structural repairs, the old walkway area. So the change orders, they're not laying in great detail, which I did not. Um, the main thing is they're within the social bar bucket, so, but there are surprises coming out, unanticipated work. It needs to be done as they, as they take things apart there. So that's when the change orders are valid, but they are still being swiped by. So the policies, there's nothing new, they're all second read, and there were no questions or concern about them, so they are on our agenda, second read. Um, this sort of informational items that we talked about, it is, uh, campaigns programs are before and after here. Uh, we saw the arrow startup report, at that point, quickly had been delivered. Principals have provided a storage space. At that point, programs fully staffed. Um, but enrollment was lower than where we, where we had the last year's enrollment at the end of, it's number two, our enrollment was low for every school. So they were anticipating that we would be getting additional moments, but, and they, I think, they said there may need to be a, a pause. Except for registration until they, they step up, ended up for their crazy involvement, I guess, for that. Um, the other item we talked about is that, uh, the business, our business owners continues to try to collect. There are negative balances from last year before an official process. So they have a rate, uh, Mr. Rosa, and send us a range to access, we have access to the program and hold that data. Um, until November, they downloaded, they're trying to follow up to get some of the money that was not paid last year. On actual programs, they continue to work on that. The other, the new item we talked about was the, uh, the sale of property, it's mentioned last month here, and there was a question from, from any public comment. So the board does own three lots, two of them on Brookdale Court. They, I think they, a lot of the back to the ball field, sound, and a third, very small lot, that's, uh, uh, North Fifth. That I choose things are at least health deals, so I can say, right, I've been so wrong. Um, so we had a conversation about whether the board would want to those, sell those properties at this point. Um, and it was special that we had that, that the meeting was, uh, uh, that, that they're. Maybe they're all, hold on for a while, to see where our financial needs is in the future. Um, say all this will be a one-time investment, a one-time influx of money, that maybe we're going to need that. Even more in the future, um, based on how many staff, the budget, any changes, and so forth. Um, also, when, as we look at R and Ds for the potential growth of this theater, um, where that, that will all fall. So our, our, we do that point with some of what, um, so it's probably facility swap now. And whatever, facilities, project updates, um. As I said, by the structural repairs departments, I've had some surprises, I'd like to go back to the engineers. Um, John's even having some of our staff do some of the work to keep the projects within budget, um, when this one thing's come up that they can do. Um, bathroom has been gutting and, um, the work is continuing on that. Uh, Ron's been working with the contractor, obstruction noise in mind as it could return sports. And there were some changes in the way that hallway is accessed, so the students will not get into the disruption. We have prepaid classroom renovation that's going to need to be completed by August of twenty one six. Out of the garage grant, um, and they are working on our techs plan, we sort of now is, uh, finalized those plans. That work should begin over spring break. That's really, uh, that's the. Those from the meeting, again, the agenda. Uh, as I said, we have the bill lists here through the end of September. Oh, we're giving for, uh, the regulations, we continue to process additional bill keeping on those, even though we're not meeting the end of the month. There's travel related expenses, um. Contracting number, the one for translation, most of us here are reputation services. One of them is the, you know, getting help from the commission for the blind and being impaired, helping identify the students. Some of it is, uh, a lot of it is, uh, reputation. Blind individuals, uh, center, it's an organization that does that. Then we have two contractors for professional development, one is on touch there. One is on, you can regard university people project. Um, one you add a district placement. And for one, we've said, we're loading on a one-to-one aid, that's to be the piece. Uh, number eight on here is Kenny Venta tuition, now those are, uh, this is already, uh, it was, uh, last spring. And it was Edison students that were going to school, as in part, they need education, because, because of the displays, uh, Edison students. And the last one is that change order that talked about the model structural repairs. And that's actually, I think, it's a pretty small, the, yeah, that's a short spell, quick, yeah.
Any questions?
These last, so just kind of, I think they hold on to the revenge of that, because they're, it's, it's.
It'd be lots, and, uh, developed, and there'll be lots.
You, then is it, we're not anymore, so.
Yes, we.
Being Bahamas, I'm saying. No.
Well, I just, I'm just completely considered pulled out, it makes sense, I don't know if it can be defined that. We can come with the best way to see if things get worse than, yeah, it's actually, I don't know, just as long as we can.
Yeah, it's like the captain.
It has to be, right, yeah. Well, it's just a better, maybe so.
You know, and so we did talk about, has it ever considered for maybe building there for us to build there and we got to expand or? Well, the, the one that's on the baseball, you know, it's maybe that actually is still the more, um, for considering that more, we have needed like sprinkler or, or access to. Uh, like a water, access the water, um. Uh, like a water, access the water, um, water being there. Not really that, that built well, the two months in the back was explored, uh, at least by the old architect C M R, who were looking at. Uh, us, what would be a preschool, is that is not, is not useful for school, when it's like a school that we need. Uh, the two months back there. Be like a little house, like we might send him to office. And move, I think, into the, you know, the party making issue, so it would have to be a building with a little bit of a, a parking lot in the town, go through there, so your home's. Houses there, so it's probably be more like a. What looks like a house, but could be, be some new office building, you know, some offices or something like that, um. I don't know, future of like, build house, I'm not really sure what you're gonna really, you can't build school, right, I actually don't really know, besides occupants or. Or like, you know, a little training facility, athletics, I'm not really sure what else you would put there, because it could be another school. Um, or anything like that, so, um, it's, it's an interesting. Lot of legs, they spoke there, so it would require us to do like paintball or something, and it's just, it is a. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not like. It's not ideal, it's valuable for us, but I'm not sure if it's ideal for us in terms of what we might. Needed for, um, in terms of where we're going, we're standing, and by the way, evolved in payments every year. So I know we're growing preschool, but just on a side note, we had, um, over the summer, forty incoming high school students. Forty, normally that's on kindergarten. So last year, their kindergarten, the present in love, this year our high school members. Artists, right, hence the challenge of the high schools facing now, we have forty-two students coming in, where are we putting everybody? Um, everybody's budgets, and, the average, over the summer.
And they're all fresh in their lives.
Oh, right. Yeah, some of the A P, some of the, you know, speed, they're trying to dress and things like that, so it's, um. Yeah, so basically, what used to be your, a very predictable thing for us, it was always in kindergarten. Last year wasn't, it was first grade. Right, because we had a small kindergarten, kindergarten in first grade, it's left here, and now this year it's high school. So just, it's, it's very interesting, I'll call it banana, they don't know how to also explain it. Um, so right now, it's hard to predict what we could use that band for, other than maybe those two uses, um. You know, but I love the recommendation of, I don't think it's worth, um, you don't live on, you don't have to sell. For, for, you know, if they need enough some money in the future, maybe, um, there's other land that's for sale that may be more useful for us, and it's, you know, sell by another, you know, there's some options.
Just a question, everything, just like all the students, do we have any kind of the option of classrooms other than prepaid, like to high school? But then that policy, um, no, um, excuse me, have a need.
Only if it's only with special ed. So special ed has requirements in terms of the number of students that compete in the class, um, including class, number two, so it could be a self containment class. There's best practice for number two, so it can be a S L, and. So there's two things for B S L and, uh, autism classes, there is a legal, then there's like the best practice, um, so if you love best practice. Sometimes we, uh, you know, like you want to obliterate them, but we can't necessarily afford that, so, you know, we're definitely compliant. Um, and so, uh, you know, in areas that we can, we try to give, that's maybe the, um. What would be the, the nice, the nice option, we make our class setting slower, other is the requirement right now, I know the high schools facing challenges with, um. Overcrowding the phys ed classes, that's a big area of concern, we're hoping for students to take it into the teen pep class. Uh, but that has low enrollments. Um, so that kind of really hurt the phys ed numbers, so something that we have to consider that here is maybe. If teen pep isn't getting those numbers, maybe we just can't run that course. If it's only sixteen, it just doesn't make sense. Because now teachers teach that class, when they could be teaching another class that offsets those numbers a little bit, um, you know, twenty something versus thirty something. Um, so, you know, there, there are, um, they feel we may not be considering the lead forward as. You know, we just can't offer that class to be lower enrollment, so if we have this on our radar, potentially, that, that's going to up. Students next year are unfortunately enrolling, we're going to be able to, uh, to run it, so that's what we looked at.
Um, um, have we considered allowing students to participate in sports to opt out?
We have that already, uh, for sophomore, seniors, seniors, option two is an option. Uh, so if they, um, if they complete, uh. Compete sports, at least state sports, if they need an option to, um, phys ed, there's also another option to phys ed for volleyball. Uh, which are adapted P E for middle schools, we have something, it's like, well, I haven't seen it. In P E with, um, our states in the middle school, ours, our autism class, it's really awesome, if you're getting opportunity at third state, it's fantastic. Uh, so we can have, have, have those as well. We were actually considering looking at night for you, just. Like the load, so all those things on the table that we're actively pursuing, um. You know, school counselors, figure out ways to, to make it faster, and especially all the pieces would be really, um, extraordinarily high, um. We that, where we can.
So, any pressure I raise on student.
Sure, so teen pep is a, um. Some of the students that are trained by the leadership to, um, provide certification to their colleagues, um, uh. Like that dating right and sex ed, things like that, so they get trained on doing that, and then they go into the classes and. Um, teach their peers, it's a really great program. The students that do participate absolutely love it, it's, and they do, um, I don't know if you ever had an opportunity come to the evening events, they also. Put on events for parents at night, um, workshops on how to talk to your children about, um, you know, guidelines and sex and sex ed and all of that. Um, that is intended, but pretty well, um, but we've always been students, obviously, it's really hard, and we'll pay, you know, um. Like future, to future classes of students, we were really believing, I, I would love to see more students. Um, came on that they should roll in and, and participate in stay classes, you get training. And then roll adapt to their peers, so it is a really great program, but, um, I'm not sure how we can promote it for. They, they, they get more involved, but that's the lead, that's the little magic, it's time to go lower, and we just, probably kind of work on it.
About the last year. Very.
It was, it was low as well, it's always sort of been historically low, but because our numbers in general were. Not as high, we were able to afford, uh, an opportunity for a teacher to teach an additional teaching section, a sixth section to teach that. Class, but now that we've, we may be able to use that teacher, if, if that, if we're paying for extra class. Have that presentation class activity regular P E. At twenty something versus six. So that's the beginning, remember that, that was a luxury. Now, I don't know if we're able to handle it, look.
Any question?
Uh, it does question something, I'm very grateful, this question, so we can hear it, so. Should you address it?
Uh, we want to say for, um. Is it all, all this? I'll hook you when I'm ready. After the, for the last night, in the teen, 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 yeah. P E, of, of the teen practice, that's something that they've changed to. Uh, the same thing that we want to make P E. Um, and we did possibly, it would want to possibly change that, but. That's what we need a whole year.
That's a good question, I don't know, I could explore that with, um, like the socks on our, this housework, and see if that's something that they would love, and then if this could be, I'm not.
I'm not sure.
And, uh, if, if, what they do is really great. I'm looking for you.
Right, um. Uh, all of this, 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 I was trying to increase the moment, I was, I was curious. How like. Here is my expected, you know, spikes, sometimes dips. I guess it's a, how can you? Like. Planet, how do you use it for planning that next year, or two years, or three years, because we're planning the future, just, we need to offer additional classes. You can ensure that all those things, this is the round unit for more, if I'm asking, I can.
We need on the principles for their expertise, they pull with his up, so. We need on the principles for their expertise and knowledge, like Dr. Donovan has a really good handle on. Um, projection and projecting the needs for the next year, uh, but she couldn't assist in the additional forty student. Um, and she's constantly working, especially in the spring, when the budget is being developed, she's constantly looking at enrollment, um. And those that are transferring in, transferring out. Uh, and rolling up students on each grade level, uh, and she was, I don't know how she does it, uh, but she does it, um, in Genesis, she's. Bitless training that she went to, uh, she was able to really. Um, have a projection spot on, and we communicate with Dr. Sessa. Uh, during that budget season, and wonderful dialogue, and it could change, it varies, so when she submitted her budget in January, it could. Be very different from when it's finally March, and you just have open. Dialogue communication to build in those extra six sections, she anticipates what, uh. What would be needed, uh, and we build it into the budget to be sure that we have funds to. To add additional classes. Or sections, but I don't, I don't know, they've anticipated forty students.
No, so what, so what she does now, what it looks like is looking at all the classes, they're okay, are there classes that are really low enrollments, like really low, because. What happens is a good balancing, so once all the, going to students in their schedules, then it's. You know, students come in, I change or not, I want this, and this, and you know, there's a lot of schedule changes that happen even in the summer, and it could be day in the year. Then what happens all of a sudden, you have a class of three, four, five, six. And well, wait a minute, that's red flag, because another class now is thirty something, and it's a little bit harder at a smaller. School, because there's only so many. Sections or something, so one person to recap, only one, you know, so we aren't, it can be very limited, so what happens is it just, we have to go within balance. Though it's much harder at the secondary level, because their schedules are very specific. It's a little bit easier at the middle, uh, the elementary, but last year, you know, mid-September, when banking was like, oh no, we have way more first graders. Than kindergarten, and now my first grade classes are, you know, twenty-six, twenty-eight for first grade, and kindergarten was like forty-eight. So we, uh, it was unfortunate, but we looked up early enough to say, okay, I think it was this, who went to first grade, and we, we collapsed the kindergarten class and distributed. So students, which I know was a whole bit of something for parents, but then it's not, I ain't trying to steal this teacher right now, it's a new teacher. But unfortunately, those are just decisions we have to make, to try to figure out how to, one, how to effectively pay for it in September, these are staying in our budget. Um, and two, how we go to, um. The, 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 the moving, the it must be students, um. And very, so, so right, which, you know, I, I know I was very good with Dan, actually, you know, made a good comment the other day when I was talking to her about the. You know, making sure our numbers are accurate for the snapshot, right, that time was, that, that, that caught us, caught us close last year, right, because. This national October, our enrollment is actually down, and it shot back up in January, but the snapshots of state funding happens in October. So it, it really is, is a, is moving target, so it depends on when the. The, the change is fluctuating. And where it's fluctuating, the, we lean into the building principals, um, student services, and Dr. Ressa is the polar. Really to try to figure out how can we adjust and move things, so that we're balanced, and, and, uh, all students can go deep that. There's not one ready answers, there's a lot of players involved.
Figure, without.
Yeah.
Very.
Yeah.
Questions, um, is it, is it a situation where we have some of the services, and if it wasn't fluctuating more, just because of. It was one, the issue would be now, is that true at all?
We, we do have emergency reserves that can be used for our district tuition, um, I think right now our allowance for nineteen thousand, we'll, we'll make a deposit into that. Um, emergency reserves for, um, security as well, um. But typically, we just make it up in the budget, when you find efficiencies, uh. Plan for inefficiency.
And also, I mean, so when we tell them, when they come and say, well, we're over here. We asked them, I really got the big D, right, so, uh, the example was, the, the problem we're going to be leaving in actually third grade I C R class. Um, because there are students come in with, uh, in fact, very specific I E T D. And so instead of, okay, well, let's look at the students, okay, so we've done D, we've read everybody, we've looked through everything, where can we find efficiencies with that? And then we actually found was that enrollment can be forced, like, yeah, two seconds of I C R, one student left. So we were going to collapse that section, because twelve was max. Um, because what happens when we have twelve, and when you hit max in I C R, you're not just going to one student in the other class, it's twelve in one, so you kind of balance them. Uh, so that way, we didn't have to open a new class, so those are kind of the conversations that we have to make when we make gambling. Right, unfortunately, here, if things come up, we look at, you know, we have our batteries, so we have breakage. Um, you know, are there other areas where we, you know, um, unfortunately, there were times throughout the year where we tell the, the. The restrictions that the budget are frozen, and only essential purchases need to be made, because we have to do things like A K role and A benefits and things like that, so. Those are conversations we have throughout the first year that we update and find different facilities to, to find this exactly.
Okay, so I'm going to go through the first now. Agenda, the warranty of the goal, uh, for the, for weeks of actions. Number two is the acceptance of graduate, uh, resignations, founder of the nation, former man, who's a speech therapist, um, effective of October. Twenty eight, um, actually, how does it already prove, it's just a change of date, and then Joyce Mucio, who is our media specialist at High School. Is retiring at the end of this semester, so she could much, um, enjoy, you know, her retirement. The, uh, approval of board appointments, there are a lot of celebrations here, because we have some high needs areas that are being filled, um. First, we have Ms. Pearson, who's going to be a lunchie. Uh, Astrid Jenny Plaza for Kara Irving, Anna Rose Abel, and B S L teacher for Barlow. Andrew Marinaro, a special education teacher for Haddon Park Middle School. Um, Jason Perry, another social education teacher for high school. Um, we also have a new administrative assistant for educational services, Martha, Martha A. 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 Something like quickly. Um, and we have a school psychologist, Claire Corliss. Our own A D P, is going to be company athlete executive director of student services. We're welcoming back Kevin Robinson, as interim supervisor of educational services. We have, um, Amanda Marrero, or Spanish translation. A few staff members for security at athletic events, thank you so much, Mr. Rothberg. Um, Miss Orman, McNamara, our coach. And then we have, um, volunteer football video relearn, which will help us really boost the, lots of, uh. Instagram, social media, um. That's Mitchell Dakman, and then Julie A. Deo, or our volunteer NS, waste basketball. Uh, and we also have the approval of salary that's going to be funded by state of the grants, and that is, you know, our decision. That's it for first and after. And then we have our policies and regulations, um, we don't have a policy committee report. There is no policy committee. That's sort of embedded in with each other, um, committee reports. The way you take that off. And then we have our policies and regulations from first reading, um, inter-district, but with choice. Some, students some protection. And special education, many of the eight initiatives with our semi program, semi. We have policies and regulations for second reading, um, I'm not going to go through all of them, because they don't discuss in previous meetings, or very not substantial, um. Changes. And that's it, you know, college. Any questions?
No, I'm just really grateful to, you know, our representatives in front and before, you know, having this way, uh, sensory. Mandatory policy, that's what they're doing.
Yes, so we have a policy, so. Um, that, those policies were the emails out to everyone, because the, uh, the original policies were attached to the agenda, like the one that came from the show assessment, so. Just, um, a note to the public, that the revised ones that we went through, are the ones that really need emails out, that's what we're working on. Okay, um, move to our second public comments. Highland Park Board of Education, problems, public participation, and has resources, time period comments. Anybody in person can comment. Okay. Angelo, um, how many do we have on our webinar?
We have four.
Four. Is there anybody on, that would like to make a public comment, you can create a cam, and then we will, we'll let you.
You have a hand, Grace. Uh, Roman.
Okay, Roman, please state your name, place of residence, and go ahead.
Yeah, hi, my name is Roman Gorbach, I live at one twenty-three North Eighth Avenue, Highland Park, how's it going?
Okay, go ahead, to your public comment.
Are you able to hear me fine?
Yes.
Great, uh, sorry, I'm just outside, uh, so this is a follow-up from the last meeting, um, I had asked about the. Uh, property that is owned by the Highland Park Board of Education. Um, I had followed up several times, uh, via email, and I was told that we would, I guess, find out more during today's meeting. So if now's the appropriate time to hear more and or ask more questions, that would be great, otherwise I can wait if necessary.
Yes, um, what we're going to do is back in, when we go to hold this. Yes, um, what we're going to do is back in, when we go to whole business, we've been married sort of like, you know, earlier, um, in regards to that, uh, discussion on sale.
Great, thank you, I'll hold.
There anybody else, um, do you have a public comment? All right, we're going to move to our action items, quick little instruction.
Six.
Back for me, can you?
Yes.
Miss Salton, yes, Dr. Coleman, yes, Dr. Pixley, yes, Miss Cruz, yes, Dr. Schoolman, yes, Miss Daniel, yes, Miss Sardman, yes, Miss Ford, yes. I'm so excited. Uh, I'm the one through nine. Dr. Beatty, yes, Mrs. Salton, yes, Dr. Coleman, yes, Dr. Pixley, yes, Miss Cruz, yes, Dr. Schoolman, yes, Miss Daniel, yes, Sardman, yes, Miss Ford, yes. For person now, I'd like to move numbers and go for more.
Same.
Dr. Beatty.
I'm guessing we see, yes, yes.
Mrs. Salton, yes, Dr. Coleman, yes, Dr. Pixley, and, Miss Curtis, yes, Dr. Schoolman, yes, Miss Daniel, yes, Sardman, yes, Miss Ford, yes. And for policy, if I can move number two and three. Um, Dr. Beatty, yes, Mrs. Salton, yes, Dr. Coleman, yes, Dr. Pixley, yes, Miss Cruz, yes, Dr. Schoolman, yes, Miss Daniel, yes, Miss Sardman, yes, Miss Ford, yes. Our next, um, I'm only offended that would be a one point, we have any quarter reviews forward, if we is not before. This month. Okay. Um, I do not have a president's report this evening, so our whole, then it's, we will start with our student rep question.
Yes.
Yes. We, we think of the previous instruction, they mentioned, we look at the, 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 there's an updated, uh, policy, you know, you know, all students are very, yes.
But it sounds, we're gonna have to, you're very.
I, I think the question is about the field access, yeah, okay, yeah, so information we found out, was it last week or the week before, my weekly report, you, and so, students should be getting my weekly emails. I'm hoping they're coming through, if you see them, if not, please let me know, and I'll make sure to check, um, insurance, but I listed that to all staff, all B O E. All, uh, families, and six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve graders, so as part of my weekly email, I did communicate, um. That, um, the staff would submit, they had the end of September to submit request for this year for out of state enrollment, we've only gotten one so far, uh, there's two weeks left. Um, receive one from DECA, um, that way, Miss, uh, Rosa and I can, um, figure out what in all inclusive budget would be for the, the board event's perspective, what they will consent on it. Uh, for this year, so we can figure out where we might need to, um, adjust the budget a little bit, and, uh, and see where we can make some savings. To pay for, uh, the chaperones, and, um, a nurse cost for, and administrative costs for those trips, and then, um, all staff have. Uh, on this by December first, submit the request for the following year, so that we can pledge it every year, so before we know their costs, so, um, in that communication, I also put out that. The board is going to be paying for the, um, collective bargaining agreement, um, requirements for chaperones to attend, and administrator and nurses. And then student funds through fundraising or other means, student paying costs, will incur the costs for students, chaperones, nurse, administrators for hotel, travel, meals. And miscellaneous expenditures like this, or whatever else is, is, we can, things like that, that would be a part of any kind of, so, um. So that thing communicated out, so there's been, um, you know, staff and staff in that communication, um. And so far, it's been, they, they work with me on it, it seems like we're properly involved, and I said I got one request so far for, um, this year, one request from you. So, that is already on it, submitting the requests for both this year and next year, uh, and that's all I received so far.
My kids are very excited to show her, they have fully known aggressive, it's so cool, we send, we, we, we announce the gifts, or supposedly, the value worked out, I think.
I, I'm hoping they check it, I don't know how frequently students check their school emails, but they're there. And they want to learn about filtering, I am super obsessed with filter, that's gonna filter for everything, so.
That's a high school, now you're getting a college recruitment, yes, that builds up even more class, so I'm talking about filter.
Okay, and also, we can.
I child filter too.
Yeah.
Promotions.
Right, thank you. Um, all right, so, Erin, can you just summarize the, uh, discussion we had earlier from?
Okay, um, what I need to, need to say, jump back, um, that there is a pretty complicated process for us, in order for us to sell the property, when everyone decides to do that. First of all, we're going back to the proof, we have to go here, we're moving the sale, sale, then it goes to, education, they have to prove that we want to sell this property. I don't know what's up with that, that's part of it, and then it becomes a public, public process. So that's not our choice, that's what the E O B says, school districts have to do, um, and then depending on when the money is received from a sale. It could, uh, you're be put into capital reserves, or you know, part of the budget of that, that will probably be the value for following year. So that's just a term to the process, um. Uh, and then at our finance facilities, you only. The, uh, John had recommended the third small lot, so you can do that, or access, as during baseball field, so. He certainly felt that was a part, it's the whole one too, um, and the other properties, I think was our feeling that it will be time to move that, that sale. The money to that sale will, teacher, we want to keep our options open, collect, both our financial needs will be, and why, why facilities might be, and how that, that, so. Only for the special top, that's all we can.
I think you're all agree with that approach. All right. Um, any new business?
Uh, that's what you say something, not to get all, no, I'm saying, but I, I'm just listening to all this talk, and just giving that. I just wanted to say to, I don't want you, everybody here, you know, we're gonna, nine month stretch, but it hasn't been easy to. Eat American, have an easy week, eat American, and, um, I think, and thanks for me, and, uh, just getting to hear all this. Talk about things reflected on the past year, how we sometimes have to breathe, and struggle with various issues, sometimes we can be accommodated, and concerned about some things, it's just. I think it's nice to know a little how, who saw how to pop ourselves, and sometimes it's a rage, and all things in a similar way, that's kind of inspiring, that's funny, just pointed out.
Anybody else? All right, I mean, we're trying. All in favor.